We're looking forward to getting out there. We give everybody, just between five and me, please call us if you'd like to do it. We get such a different agencies, folks, they can do stuff by. The second one, I just wanted to give an update and just kind of let everybody know where we're at. We have on our crisis response unit, there's been a lot of talk as far as what's the next step, what's the next level. Currently, we have crisis response, we've had to call, we've come to our scene for a variety of calls, people in crisis.
Homeless, things that maybe just aren't generally law enforcement completely related, but they don't know where else to go, who else to call, so we get the call. And that can be somebody maybe a long wait for that response. And so now we're looking at what's the next step. And a lot of discussion between the chiefs of police in Washington County and statewide is how do maybe we start embedding social workers riding along with law enforcement? So there's a lot more framing up to do on this, a lot more discussions, but we are in the very early phases. And how do we do that for the city of Oak Park Heights and collaboratively with our other neighboring agencies and sheriff's department? So I just wanted to bring that up and just let you know that we are making discussions, are we having discussions on that? And we're looking to hopefully get something in stone here by the beginning of next year for sure, if not end of this year.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Then the recycling award, Jennifer.
Mayor and council Kelsey Splinter at 5696 Osgood Avenue North and Jerome Geraldine Wassinger at 1509063rd Street North were chosen as the recycling award winners for the month of July. And then I did have one other announcement I wanted to make tonight. I did attend the Minnesota Women in City Government Annual Meeting during the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, and I wanted to let the council know that Mayor McHumber received the Lifetime Achievement Award for her role in leadership and mentoring women in government. And that's a great honor.
Thank you.
So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Next is the visitors' public comments section, and this is a time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda. But first of all, I have a proclamation of achievement for Christian Howlett. I received a, where did I put it here? I received a letter regarding all of his achievements, and you can see this, both sides. And I was just stunned by for such a young man, the wonderful things that he's accomplished in his lifetime. So we do have a proclamation of the city of Oak Park Heights, and first of all, we need to take a vote to approve that. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Littlejagren, second by council member Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
And unfortunately, Christian couldn't be with us tonight, but he, there is going to be a recognition event on August 5th at St. Michael's Church for him receiving the recognition for Eagle Scout. I know his parents are here, so if he could come up. I'll give this to you. I'm going to make you come over here.
Thank you.
It's proclamation of the city of Oak Park Heights. Whereas Oak Park Heights city resident Christian Howlett has obtained the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is a lifetime award and sets the stage for a lifetime of expectations. And whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is obtained by only approximately 2% of all scouts. And whereas the rank of Eagle Scout represents the highest award possible for a boy scout. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout represents a significant commitment to leadership, stewardship, and teamwork to accomplish a community benefiting project. And whereas Christian's Eagle project included the materials, labor, and construction of Oak Park Heights and Autumn Park, which will be enjoyable for park visitors, greeters of home. Now therefore, I, Mayor McHumber, by virtue of the authority vested in the area of the city of Oak Park Heights and the state of Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Saturday, July 1st, 2021, as Christian Howlett a day and call for losses and to acknowledge the accomplishments of Christian Howlett in witness thereof. You have to be so proud of yourself. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Wish you to be here.
Yes.
Send us.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then next, I think Angie Hong is here. Would you like to address the council on what's going on?
Certainly. Yeah, I know you only have, to introduce myself, Angie Hong, I coordinate the East Metro Water Resource Education Program, which Oak Park Heights has been a member of for a number of years. I don't want to take any more of your time than you planned on the agenda, but I do want to thank you for continuing to support the program, and I'm happy to answer any questions about it. I know that it's on your consent agenda, so if anybody has any questions about what we are up to, I'm here and happy to answer those.
Really appreciate all the information that you send out and all the programs that are going on. It's good information.
Yeah. Yeah. And with, you know, the happy side effect of COVID is with switching things over to Zoom, we've actually had a huge increase in participation in our workshops. So that's been great. We've gone from getting, you know, maybe 20 people coming to a workshop to having 80 to 100 showing up to a webinar. So that's really been a pleasant surprise for me.
Well, thank you.
But it's also fun to see people in person.
It is.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, Angie. And then is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on anything not on the agenda? Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approve bills and investments, check 67033 to 67106, and the amount of $401,473.20. Approve city council work session notes from June 22nd, 2021. Approve city council minutes, June 22nd, 2021. Approve resolution accepting donation from Taco John's for use as prizes for the Walk Run Event. Approve agreement extension with East Metro Water Resource Education Program for the municipal separate storm sewer system assistance. Approve NLC City Summit registration and approve appointment of Annie Catherine Barris to the Park and Trails Commission.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Oh, second. Motion by council member Rock, second by council member Johnson. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry about that.
Got to get back in practice.
You know, when you do Zoom, everything is a roll call.
All right. Council member Doherty.
Yes.
Council member Johnson.
Yes.
Council member Littlejagren.
Yes.
Council member Rock.
Yes.
Mayor McHumber.
Yes. And we have no old business tonight. We have no public hearings tonight and no old business, so we'll move on to new business, which is Wind Park Business Center Planned Unit Development Amendment, Lot 4, 5650 Memorial Avenue North. Scott.
Thank you, mayor and council. Will Zintel, representing Wind LLC, has made application for this Plan Unit Development Amendment. It also includes the design guidelines and site plan review. It allows for the expansion of the building at 5650 Memorial Avenue North. It is a change from the original site plan, originally approved for the Wind Park Business Center. The building is proposed to be expanded from about 9,000 square feet to 24,400 square feet. It allows for Mr. Zintel to expand the STO prefab panel company. Property is Zone B3 Highway Business District. And again, this has been a PUD since the concept plan was first approved in 2000, April of 2000. And that was created so that we had a coordinated business park with shared parking and shared driveways. But anytime we've had an expansion or a major change to that, we've taken it through a Plan Unit Development Amendment. Went through the zoning, setbacks are all compliant with this expansion. There is a wetland to the west. There have been discussions with the Browns Creek Watershed District. It did not, did not qualify for their setback requirements. And at 32 feet from the delineated wetland, it's well within our buffer requirement, 25 feet. Impervious surface coverage, that's something that we've realized since I went to planning commission, and our city attorney had actually recognized this as far as the square footage just didn't quite add up. We're at 81% with this change of impervious surface. The requirements or max for that B3 district, I think for the entire current center is at 80%. But we shouldn't have an issue overall. But again, we need to acknowledge that 81% of impervious surface, and that has been built into the resolution this before you tonight. Parking has been met, parking, our lighting requirements have been met, no additional signage is proposed, building height amet, grading, and no issues with that. Trees, there were some trees, about 14 trees to be removed. A lot of those were in poor condition that's on that side adjacent to the wetland. And most of the trees, again, poor condition, but there is a tree replacement, a dollar amount that he'd have to provide about 20, excuse me, $3,291. There's conditions, again, have been revised. You received, I believe, an email from Eric this morning, and also it's on your desk tonight. Will and I talked briefly. He doesn't have an issue with, with any conditions. One that was changed is number six. There is a vacant lot to the south of the Wind Park Business Development that's owned by Mr. Zintel, and there is some cleanup that needs to be done. So we'll have, we'll put his feet to the fire and make sure he gets that cleaned up. But that just also to let the council know is not part of the calculations for impervious surface. So that is beyond those requirements, and it obviously can be, can be developed up to that 80% impervious. So with that, Tyler Hughesby is here tonight from the Planning Commission, and of course Will's here. So if you have any questions, I'm here to, here to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Scott or Mr. Zindel or? You did a good job on it, then.
I make a motion that we approve the, can't talk anymore. Move for approval of the resolution?
Second.
Motion by council member Doherty, second by council member Rock. Eric.
Council member Doherty.
Yes.
Council member Johnson.
Yes.
Council member Littlejagren.
Yes.
Council member Rock.
Yes.
Mayor McHumber.
Yes. Next is a considered date amendment for August 24th, city council meeting. I'm potentially running into a conflict for that and looked at moving it back to a one week, was that the 31st? And then we had a work session earlier. It sounds like it might be a good idea anyway, because Betty, who are working on budget, will have more information on values and things that we would need pertinent. But if it doesn't work out, just to get an okay with the council that I may have to do a Zoom for that particular meeting, and thank goodness we have that technology now. Does, I don't know if that would work with changing it to the 31st for everyone, but it'd probably be helpful for budget-wise, too.
Fine with me. Yes, sir.
Do we want to set the work session to at this time?
We certainly can, and because you had mentioned earlier, maybe starting it earlier as well.
So I'd make a motion that we set a work session starting at 4:30, and then council meeting following the work session, and moving it to the 31st of August.
And then we can have it posted that it's just following, just in case we run over a little bit like we did tonight. Okay. And then is there a second?
Second.
Motion by council member Doherty, second by council member Littlejagren, Eric, or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Update to city administrator performance review process. Carly?
So as noted on, in the packet, I'm just asking the council to authorize the city attorney to review how we conduct performance evaluations for the city administrator position to encourage a more informative review process. As noted, last year, there was some criteria that doesn't necessarily fit our process, and it also might not adapt to conditions like COVID where we might want to look at how can we make it more flexible in our evaluation process. I don't know if our city attorney has anything to add to that?
Well, and I think this is something we talked about not only last year, maybe even two years ago, in the performance review process of potentially trying to revamp it. And we did make a minor change to the process last year, but council member Johnson thought that maybe even more, a more comprehensive look at it would be warranted and helpful, but we wanted to run that by the entire council before we just went ahead and started completely changing the process without you knowing about it. And so that was the purpose of this agenda item. The hope would be to create some revised materials and still move forward with a review process in August.
Sure. I know when we first set that up, it seemed to be a template that came from the League of Minnesota cities that a lot of cities were using at that time, but it's not obsolete, but dated. Needs a fresh revise of it. And I know we just did a review not too long ago, Eric, myself, and that format was, I liked that format. And you can talk to Eric at your staff meeting, you know, maybe come up with some ideas.
Sure.
With that, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Johnson, second by council member Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is consider scheduling of council team building session.
So I just put this on the agenda to figure out what the scheduling was for this. I know that there was a preference early in January for a full-day event, and I know that schedules are getting busy with the fall. Particularly, I'm going to be starting a new job, so I just wanted to make sure I could attend. And so that's what I was just making sure, we can make sure that goes through.
I had been working on that before the COVID came, and we were trying to get dates, and then all of a sudden, everything stopped.
Yeah.
And we had, and I see in here that you were talking about Pam Whitmore, and she had been working with the league before. The league was offering that service at no charge to members. I did have a call into Dan Greenswig at the league to see if they're still doing it, if they have a new person, if it's still available at no charge. But if we were to go with Pam Whitmore, there's several others that I've had, you know, whether I was on the board for the league or other places, that Dave Bartholomew is a really good one, Sarah Frederick, Hugh Life, which is Richard and Irina Furman. But if we have to ask for a price or an idea of what we're looking for, maybe we could look at every, all the different ones if the league doesn't have it. But I was looking at trying to do something maybe the end of December, begin, beginning of January. So we always start the year off nice and fresh.
I would, into Jan, December gets kind of crazy.
Yeah, I would agree.
But I think an all-day one maybe in January, maybe even like on a Friday, and then afterwards, if we're not all hating each other, we can maybe plan something.
Some of the ones at the league, they've been like a full day, like on a Friday and a half a day on a Saturday. I don't know that it's necessary to have it that long, but it's nice to have a full day.
Yep.
And likewise with those, they generally send out like a survey monkey or something ahead of time. You know, what are some of the things that you would like to cover? And then they actually contact each individual member so that they pinpoint what direction the council would like to go, make sure they hit the topics that are relative. So if we could have staff maybe look into that, or maybe I could just let you know when I get a call back from Dan Greenswig, start with the free one first, and if not, then if we want to get some quotes from others, have staff look into that.
That's perfect.
Okay. So is there a motion to give that direction to staff? So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Johnson, second by council member Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, municipal state aid on local roads. Lee, I am a Sui, or Eric?
I'll go Lee, you guys read what I wrote all day long. Lee's more important.
Thank you, mayor and members of the council. So Eric's background information here is spot-on. It's, it tells exactly what the whole system is about. Basically, when a city reaches a population of 5,000, a city is able to join the municipal state aid system program, which allows for funding for those streets that the city designates as part of their state aid system, which Eric mentions in here is, is 20% of the city's total street mileage, and then the funds can be used for those streets that are designated. And so there's some other background as to the type of, of roads that get designated, and that's something that we would go through the process and have a meeting with, with the city staff and keep the council apprised as far as, you know, a proposed system as we go forward. So in regards to what the process will actually be, is the first thing that we need to do is, is complete the inventory of the city streets, which the staff has already provided us with a spreadsheet of, of those streets. What we need to add to that is just the other, the roads that are under other jurisdictions, county roads, CASs, state highways, and any applicable turnbacks. So we would finish off that inventory, and then we would go right into developing the state aid system map. Every state aid city has to have a system map that will need to go into the state and be approved, so we will put that, that together as part of our second task. Then, of course, there's a state database that needs to be completed with all of that data and information in order to allow the state and the city, to some extent, keep track of all of the things that occur on the city system over time. So that will, that will all get input. Then we would assist the city in putting together a resolution. A commissioner's order needs to occur in order to establish the city as a state aid city. And so there needs to be a resolution from the city asking the commissioner to do that order. So we would help put that together. The other thing that we would help with is help the city decide how they want their annual apportionment for maintenance funds. So there's a portion of the allocation that the city will receive each year for the state aid system that can be taken out for maintenance. And the memo kind of outlines several potential ways to do that. Some are easier than others. The maximum amount requires detailed reporting as to how you've used those funds. So we would help put together a letter for that as well. And once that's all done, and the commissioner, commissioner's order is done, then the city's a state aid city. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
So we're just waiting to find out if we've gained three people or not?
Three over 5,000, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for Lee or Eric on this? I'd like to say it's pretty straightforward, but it's a lot of paperwork.
It's a little bit of coordinating.
So is there a motion to approve the proposal from StanTech to go forward with municipal state aid?
So moved.
Second. Motion by council member Littlejagren, second by council member Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approve agreement authorizing bike event for Sunrise Rotary on August 15th, 2021, Bridge the Valley. Eric?
Thank you, mayor and council. Rick? There he is. Okay. I've not met him before, so I'm, Rick Heidick is here from the Sunrise Rotary Group, and they're hoping to hold a bike rally or event on August 15th. And Mr. Heidick will maybe tell us more about it. And your process for these things has been to bring the concept before you, issue a permit in the form of an agreement that outlines the dates, the times, safety protocols, emergency plans, what have you. And that draft is in your packet. We probably have some tweaks with dates and such, but we do assess $1,000 escrow in case there's damages or problems. We've never really had any of those issues, and a $500 impact fee. You have waived those in the past for nonprofits, which is what this is, but the contract starts with that, so that's up to you folks to, to talk about. And the applicant would have time before now in the end of the year to petition for that, or maybe you deal with that tonight. But anyway, so they are here to ask for permission to hold this rally through the city on August 15th.
Okay. Thank you for the detailed information.
Yeah.
Are there any questions from council for the applicant or Eric?
No. You ought to say anything, Rick?
You can come forward. Please introduce yourself.
I'd say you should be on TV, but I don't think I'm on TV.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for your consideration of the application. Just in a nutshell, this is a fundraising event for the Sunrise Rotary. It's our first annual. We're tying it to the weekend events with the city's lift and loop celebration, and so it's a great time to kick off the bike ride. We think this is a real advantage for the area, for the St. Croix Valley. If, if you've seen any of the information, we've got a number of different rides, rides of this type, you know, around the state, a lot of times can, can gather up to maybe 2,000, 3,000 participants. We're estimating we'll have about 400. The ride, the actual route that comes through Oak Park Heights is actually one of our more popular routes. It's a 27-mile route, but we expect about 120 to 140 riders. Again, it's well mapped out. We've reviewed this with Washington County, all of the different localities and Washington County sheriffs. We've got all of the crossings supported, all the safety implemented and everything, and we understand the deposits. That's kind of it in a nutshell. If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve and waive the $500 fee.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Motion by council member Doherty, second by council member Littlejagren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I hope the weather cools off for you for that.
As long as it doesn't rain, it should be recreatable.
Might be enjoyable to have some rain.
Yeah, it could be right by that time, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next is adopt 2021 to 2026 Anticipated Capital Improvement Plan. We did have a work session before the council meeting to talk about some of these things. And I don't know, Betty, if you'd like to address it, or chief, or both of you, some of the suggestions from that.
So, so as we discussed in budget tonight, this is a CIP for 2021 to 2026. It's not binding on the city. It's a plan. It's a tool that we use for funding. It's time, it's for departments to prioritize what their needs are. And so that's, I'm looking for approval for that tonight. As we met earlier, we had discussed some of the things that the chief had requested, and we had put out to 2022, 23, and 24. As we discussed and came up with the funding for it to be paid for through the auto replacement, his police vehicle replacement fund, we made some changes. And so I'll outline those changes to what's on the summary here, and I would ask council if they would agree with that and adopt it tonight. So on the police that he has for 2022 was the evidence software and tracking system, the police department chairs, replacement of the TASER units, and the replacement of the issued handguns. These amounts to about $24,000. Instead of being in 2022, we're going to move them into 2021. Also under the 2023 column is $17,000 for the replacement of the rifles, and we're going to move that into the 2021 budget. Also, for the replacement of the TASERS, we're doing that on a rotation basis, so we would move the amount that was listed for 2023 and the amount that listed for 2024, both at $6,000 each of those years, we would move them to 2022 and 2023. So we're just basically moving some of the items one year forward. We're going to keep rotation of the TASERS, and he's going to replace some of the equipment on a sooner basis.
The rifles.
Sorry?
The rifles.
The rifles will be replaced in 2021.
In 2021.
Yes, yes. If he can get them right. So that's what we're, we're looking at for the changes of what was presented earlier. This is also on our website, and I'll make the changes on there.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Betty, for the chief?
I'll move we accept the capital improvement budget.
Second.
With staff changes, right?
With the changes.
Yep.
Motion by council member Rock, second by council member Littlejagren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, are there any other council items or announcements first?
Is our, is our intern learning anything tonight?
Why don't we have Katie come up and introduce herself, because she's our newest person here at City Hall? Put you on the spot, Katie.
I don't like talking in front of people. Yeah, I'm Katie, summer intern, and it's been really fun so far, just to get experience in what everyone here does, so I've enjoyed it a lot.
And you're going to school where?
At Hamlin from Economics and Political Science, so.
Well, thank you. They're going to get better at public speaking now.
I'm going to keep her up there for a minute.
Uh-oh.
So she's working on a couple of projects, and I hope to have her at your August 31 meeting and just give you up, at least on two projects related to solid waste and, and our business vacancy study. So why don't you just give them a quick update of what you're touching base on with those?
Yeah, so I put together a table full of data for multi-tenant commercial properties and their vacancies, and putting together a memo for that. And then I also put together a sanitation survey to get everyone's like satisfaction. And I'm working on transferring that into a table, too, and then putting together a memo, so. So those have been my two big projects so far.
I'll look forward to seeing the information.
Can't wait to discuss.
And we'll put you on the spot again then. Thanks, Katie. Next, we have a closed session, and Kevin, can you reference that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the council's going to go into a closed session to discuss a potential real estate transaction, and so that is permitted to go into closed session under Minnesota statutes 13D.05 subdivision 3C. And pursuant to that particular statute, we need to identify the property on the record. And so the property that we're going to be talking about is the undeveloped or vacant lot that's owned by the school district, 834, that's located on Memorial Avenue on the west side of the road, generally between Century Power and the public storage facility over there. And so that's what we'll be talking about in, of course, the closed session. And then I expect that the council will probably adjourn at the end of the session and not come back into open session, but that'll be up to you.
Would you, I mean, we can adjourn now to the closed session, and then you can give an update at the next meeting? Would you like us to come back out here and adjourn?
I think you can just say you're going to adjourn at the end of the closed session and advise the public they don't need to hang around.
Okay.
Can I ask a question before we leave?
Sure.
Why is, we seem to be having some problem tonight with the mics going in and out.
I noticed it.
We got new equipment. It'll probably take a while to get some of the, let's tweak it a little bit.
Does some seem loud?
No, they go in and out.
Oh, okay. Like mine seems really loud.